First within.
Observing that we're at the appointed hour and that all members appear to be present, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start by taking a look at the approval of the agenda. I trust everyone has had a copy. Ricky, there's another copy of the agenda down there, which you send it this way. I don't see everyone had a chance to look at it beforehand. Are there any suggestions for changes to the agenda? All in favor of keeping it as it is, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Brief announcements by authority members. I'll look around the room and see if anyone is well.
Just I want to call it by way of disclaimer, something I mentioned, the possibility of at our last meeting two months ago, I've started a position with the US Treasury. I do not think there's much opportunity for conflict, but always in the interest of calling up the possibility of conflict of interest, but is working on the. Implementation of the Inflation Reduction Act and associated technology spending. So there's always the possibility of conflict. I see none now. I will obviously call it up as such.
Thank you for advising us. Do you have any fresh minted money?
I I have to take a tour of the group engraving and then also the the man I want to see.
Feel better knowing that you're.
You feel better knowing that I'm helping to steer eighty billion dollars in spending because you can actually feel worse.
Honestly, Waldo, compared to all so many others who could be doing that, we feel better.
If somebody's got to do it. Any other comments?
Okay, we'll move on. We come to the part of our meeting, which is open for public comment. We don't seem to have. A gallery of members of the public in the room. I don't know. Can't see who's online.
We currently have. One non stakeholder member of the public. So.
Anyone who'd like to speak as a matter of member of the public, please use your raise hand function and we'll do our best to include you. Give you a moment to do that. And not hearing that anything's happening, we will move on. The next item is the consent agenda. Copy of that's on the following sheet from the. From the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Senate agenda is approved. We have meeting minutes from the April twenty sixth and May twenty fourth meetings to approve. Bill, were there any, I I know you weren't here for one of them, but were there any substantial?
Just some grammatic or corrections.
Just some grammatical things. So the minutes that that we were presented are the minutes we are voting on unless someone has an objection. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. That was for both sets of minutes. And we'll move right on. Old business. Now let's get to some, oh, yes, Phil.
Because the June meeting was canceled.
Yes.
I can go ahead and draft a minutes for the June meeting, simply saying canceled. You want me to do that? So it's in the in the record?
So someone searching the record easily finds that fact. I think that would be useful.
Okay. That was my plan.
You know, just to be clear, it's not where you put a big raise in for yourself or something. That's. Thank you, Bill. That's a good idea. I think we'll make it make it more self documenting. Old business, the body twenty twenty one project. Mike, is that to you?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll take it from here. And we have been working very hard in July. The the project was supposed to have been closed out June thirtieth. DHCD was expecting. A significant amount of both financial information and project information, how many passings, what's the take rate, those types of things. We've had multiple meetings with the ACB and Brightspeed where DAC is presenting more time for Brightspeed to put information together. One of the holdups there is that due to some excellent work that that Jason has completed. We went through and looked at all of the locations that Brightspeed was supposed to have provided service to. And our analysis shows that there's ninety locations that. Were supposed to be in the original project after the re-scope, so not the original, but the re-scope project. So we're asking Brightspeed to come up with a plan.
To be clear, that's the project we went under contract with both the ACV and Brightspeed.
Yes, in agreement with Brightspeed. That's another point of contention. We have a contract, the broadband authority has a contract with DACD. In turn, the broadband authority has an agreement and there's substantially differences between a contract and an agreement. So there's a little bit of. Back and forth going on with with that specific language and how that's going to be used as far as what Brightspeed's response will be.
Does this still Delorean to inform us of something?
Not yet.
Not in, not in open session.
Thank you, sir.
So we're trying to, we're trying to come up with a plan. There's been multiple. Requests for the information from DHCD. It first started with with Jason and I being very. Helpful, trying to work with Brightspeed to to make sure that DHCD gets the information they need. There were. Indications that that was going to happen. It didn't happen. We asked again. It didn't happen. We brought DACD and DACD and. Jason and I met with Brightspeed several times and. They have since said they're wanting to provide the information that DHCD has requested. And the last two times that they were asked, they said it would be available. Either later this week or early next week. And the last time we heard it was going to be early this week. We still don't have the information. So we're we're on hold. Everybody knows that, you know, the stance of the broadband authority is there's to be no payment. Made to Brightspeed until this information can be provided, reviewed by the broadband authority and Jason and me. And then submitted to DACD and DACD has to approve it as well. So there's a long process that has to happen and we can't. We can't get past step one. So the money is just held up. So it's it's just sitting there waiting to be spent. But there has to be justified spend.
Where are the ninety locations? Are they spread out or?
This, the bulk of the locations are in the Stony Point and Campbell Cobham project areas. The 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 largest portion is. The Gilbert Station portion that is nearest to Route twenty. As you get to the big curve there, there's. I believe twelve locations just on that stretch. Most of the others are scattered throughout the Sony Point and Campbell Cobham. There's a handful in other project areas. I'm confident. The analysis that we did is. It is thorough and looks at not just data that we had previously, but also data that was provided by Brightspeed. That is proprietary business information that they were willing to share with us to ensure that we had a. Clear understanding of where they had constructed to. And some of the locations that are lacking are probably areas that they can assert. That they have facilities near enough to build to, but in our analysis, we did not see evidence of it at the time. And so. I suspect that the number can come down with infrastructure built, but there will continue to be locations that they have not built to. That there isn't any evidence that they have facilities to serve at present.
Any, any questions?
Yeah, I have a underlying procurement question, and I should know this, but I haven't looked at any of this for two years, however long it's been that we've gone for this. What was the mechanism by which we specified? Here's where you're going to serve. Was it a list of addresses? Was it a polygon? And how is it that their? List is different than our list.
So part of the challenge.
Thank you. We have the same answer.
I I was most recently in in the conversation with them about it. Part of the challenge is we have an agreement. And DHCD has an agreement. And both reference the application. And typically in a body program, the application is actually part of the contractual agreement. So. One of the challenges that we faced in conversation with Brightspeed is that you continue to assert that the obligation in the agreement is to build eighty point five miles of fiber. And that the. Outcome of building eighty point five miles of fiber was an estimated sixteen hundred and seventy five locations. That is a fair interpretation only if you ignore the application. Because the application clearly spells out. Specific geographic areas that would be served by this project. It also specifies the conditions by which those projects would be served. So so there's a lot of of. Required elements that are actually laid out, not in the agreement, but in the application. And that is where there was some some disagreements between. Our understanding and Brightspeed's understanding. DHCD is. Going to weigh in to make a determination about how to move forward. DHCD has asserted a couple of things to our favor. Which are included here, and that's that. There is no option for reimbursing outside of the specified project area. So we're going to look in a couple of minutes at the take rate. Those numbers include areas that were actually built outside of the project. And so we need to, at a certain point, remove those. They also cannot. Be reimbursed for work that was coincident to the body twenty two round. So unfortunately, the polygons do show that body twenty two. Fireflies area and the Ardo. Some of those locations were located inside of the polygons. And this is where. We do have to make clear those polygons ultimately were derived by. Brightspeed and DHCD that sat down together and worked to draw. Lines that were suitable and agreeable to both parties. The fact that there was some body twenty two included in that is unfortunate. But DHCD has asserted that none of those areas can be reimbursed as part of body twenty one.
Would would be overlap, the twenty two twenty one overlap. Is unrelated to the ninety or so locations.
That is correct. Okay, thank you for that. Well, then an additional question that I believe might be a rich question, which is. What is the language to do, maybe to know off the top of their head, by which we have incorporated by reference the application within the contract?
So I don't know off the top of my head. My recollection is our contract incorporates the our contract with at the time CenturyLink. For the year, so. And that's that's so that we bring in the technical.
Oh, yeah.
Technical requirements.
Well, something that I would. Sleep better knowing is you could communicate to whoever, I assume it's you, Rich, you could communicate to us. Where in the agreement is the language that we assert is incorporated in that by reference? And the reason I'm so interested is because it does seem to bring some legal exposure, or if not for us, for 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 Brightspeed. Because there's this disagreement here, I would like to know what was the form of the agreement that we're disagreeing about with that clauses. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm not real familiar with what Brightspeed is saying in terms of that's not.
Oh, I appreciate that. Maybe nobody's prepared to provide the answer right now. That's just information that I would. Like to to have to understand because this this has been a few months and I'm just getting nervous about. About what's going on. So if 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 y'all could get back to us like maybe by the next word beginning anyway with, here's the, here's the bit where we think. We've incorporated this by reference and that Brightspeed is not agreeing with, I would find that really. Thank you very much.
Yes, supervisor price.
Well, I'm just still trying to head around this. I understand that the H U D says locations built outside the project are not. But if it's inside the project, but it's also in body twenty two. Twenty twenty two, is that what that second part is saying?
Yes.
Then is it eligible under body twenty twenty two? Is that how it works?
Yeah, it is. And and that's a fortunate parcel. Many will have the option of both. Service providers. Anybody can build wherever they want. I mean, they have to go through the proper procedures and get right away and those types of things, but. You know, they decide they're gonna, you know, overbuild. Multiple areas, they're they're free to do so. We're not restricting.
This is money twenty one, so presumably this is before body twenty two. And so it seems odd to think that the twenty twenty two. Area would take precedent for for reimbursement when it was already in twenty twenty one.
I would have thought it was the other way.
I think it was just they they were in, they ended up being in the polygon that was drawn. For twenty twenty one, but it's really a twenty twenty two project.
Yeah, it's a twenty twenty two. Just think about it about parcels, the location, and sometimes. This happens frequently, I think, where a build will happen and the fiber company that's doing the build. You know, they'll they'll see an opportunity to go down another street. As long as they're not asking for reimbursement, they can do it. They can do it. The company that won the funding, whether it's Ardo or fun or body, is still justified to go and get the money. Now they can't go back and get another grant. You know, so that locks, once, once the first provider goes in, they can't get but any active grants there. Capacity to.
I guess I was trying to understand the distinction between the polygon and the parcels.
The 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 challenge comes from the history of the project. Recalling that in in the application process in twenty twenty for the body twenty one project. It was a much more extensive project. In January of twenty one, or the project had already been awarded before it was taken to contract. The Ardo function happened and Firefly and other electric cooperatives were awarded several locations. And that's where the challenge comes. At the time, the HCD required polygons to define your project area, not point locations or parcels. When the Ardo went through, it was based on not parcels, but a a a. A location point. And so when they had to re-scope the project, what they ended up doing, it's just new. Because that was the the that DHCD knew to avoid. The dots. So new lot, new boxes to avoid the dot. And obviously, the process was imprecise. And that's why some of the bodies twenty two still ended up inside of the project area. There's. But that's one of the reasons why it was important for us to make sure that DACD weighed in that at the point where Brightspeed feels. Able to invoice us, they will not be able to be reimbursed for any location that was also included in body twenty two.
And that's the same question, I think.
I'm just, I'll make a comment. The complexity of that action. Is what's playing out right now. And so I think the the HCD should fully understand why there's disagreement because of of how that played out. And it is, it is. Very complicated to try to even explain that to somebody, much less implement in in the ground. So. Yeah, I know that it's being worked at that level since I I. I appreciate the difficulty in it because of that introduction of Ardo often. How that didn't change everything.
I mean, the sleep at night comment earlier, I would just want to. Reassert that. Things are still amicable, meaning, okay, so I just, I just want to put that on the record. We are still working in the. Along the same lines and feel like there's going to be a good resolution soon.
Well, that's good to hear. That's a good note.
So we we were optimistic, I guess is the right word. So that that was a heavy part of the twenty one update. If there's any more questions.
Let's move forward.
Okay, so lot, lot of good work on what we considered a a real challenge. We're much less concerned now with what we thought was going to be a significant issue that. Jason and I would have to triage for. Many years to come. Unfortunately, it looks like things are working better. Meaning, and those are the line burials. I guess I need to say what I what I'm what I mean here. We were very concerned that. In order to make some of the deadlines, Brightspeed made a decision to put in what are called temporary lines. So what that is, is they'll go out and measure to a home. And they'll give the homeowner the option, do you want to have a temporary cable so that you get connected faster? And we'll come back later to to bury that same cable or in in some cases install a new one. And our concern was, okay, we'll make that work, but we've got to track those because we don't want five years from now, somebody. Going through their yard or in their woods or something, finding this cable that they have no idea what it is, rip it off and then suddenly they have no fiber or whatever. So there was a lot of concerns about that. Things have been working much better with the line burials. Property restoration with every project, we have these types of things and things are, things are working well. Accountant billing issues for our particular project, body twenty one. Everybody may remember, we talked a little bit about what was called the early bird discount. When that first, when that bird first flew, it didn't fly very well. And since that time. Brightspeed has done a much better job of making sure. That people who've signed up for the EBD, the early bird discount are getting their bills straightened out. So that's good. And Jason, you may want to talk about the affordable connectivity program credit.
Yeah, so as part of our efforts to expand footprint of ACP Bridge, we approached. Right speed several times, reminded them of the program, and we had a chance to talk to them a few months ago now. And and one of the things that they pointed out is. And it's rolling out now. They decided to actually supplement the ACP themselves. So ACP eligible customers in Albemarle County. Are actually receiving sixty dollars of service credit, thirty dollars from the federal government and thirty dollars from CenturyLink. Obviously, I'm sorry, from Brightspeed clears our ACP Bridge credit by ten dollars. And it's targeted at eliminating the majority of the cost for those households. So you know, I I think that that's.
Kudos to them.
Exactly. It is a a a good demonstration of a willingness to address affordability as a concern. And that applies to both DSL and fiber customers. And then we do have updated take rate figures. These include the June and July figures. The big takeaway from May is orders continue to increase. It's been seventy five orders since May. And activations. And this was part of our concern about. Challenges in maintaining a steady flow of activations since. May, there have been more than a hundred activations, which is. It makes sense when you consider how many orders have been placed, that they would be taking care of older orders as well as new orders as they're coming along. We still periodically hear from residents that have been waiting for an order or a line burial, but the rate of those concerns has dropped off significantly. And the image is this graph, again, it's the number of orders placed. So we want to see lines moving up into the right and then plateauing and. Largely, that's what we're seeing. And then for the last one, and this is where we want to see these numbers going down. This is the percentage of. Pending orders, orders that have not been addressed yet. And you can see in the. Cobham area, I believe, is. That spike that's actually going the wrong way. And that is coincident with an additional forty forty orders just since June. So we imagine that. Given time, that number will, that that line will drift back down.
I'm concerned about the low take rate in Stony Point, given that's like our biggest chunk. But I'll say as a resident of Stony Point, I got a postcard this week. I don't know why they sent it to us. We're already customers, but you know, it's advertising their service. I don't think we got in any prior communication from Brightspeed about that. So maybe that'll help the line to go up. Because we thirty percent, I think, is enough for the right right now, which is pretty low.
I believe that is correct. Of course, I can't see it on the screen.
Thirty percent right now, up to forty two percent total, and they're obliged to get above.
They did commit to a marketing effort to follow completion of the project. So we. It sounds like that has begun and we hope that that will continue and have a positive impact.
To me, point looks like it's a forty three percent.
You're right. I'm sorry. I'm lying to you. Right, there's no. Okay, so it's actually slightly better than average, might be a more positive spin on that. Well, we could only sign up in April.
Yeah. Okay, given time, we imagine that both those numbers will move in the right direction.
Are we ready to do twenty twenty two?
Well. I think so, Chair. The only. Break I would take is if Rich is on, it's Rich on.
Yeah.
Rich may want to address because this will. Ostensibly, with everything that I know, will be his last meeting, and I think he he would like to talk with everyone. With the broadband authority at least. So Rich did an outstanding job working us through some challenges. So I'd like to give him the floor if. The chair agrees.
Okay, to recognize Rich.
Mr. Scholman, if you'd like to unmute.
Thank you. Let's see, have you got, am I just voice or am I also image as well?
Just voice right now.
Okay, great, great. Well, I'm just as surprised to be here as you are to see me here or to hear me. I agreed to to stay on until they got somebody new in, which I thought was going to happen very quickly. But that it didn't happen as quickly as I thought it was going to, but they they've targeted, they've they've got somebody identified. They're targeting August seventh. For the new person to come in. I'm probably going to stick around that week and make sure that that person gets around to see everybody. So I'll make sure that they're connected up with. With with Mike and Jason before I go and several of the counties too where we've. Where we've got some issues going, but Albemarle is by far the more most important. We've got the most going on there. I just, just a couple of quick comments and I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but. As you probably, well, you may not know, but none of the people that were involved in the Vadi project from the beginning. Are here now. So the network planner, the the folks that did the contracts, all the, all the people are different. And as you noted, the the. The process by which we came up with the passings and locations is very, very complicated. So it it has taken me, along with Mike and Jason, who have worked really hard on this. Some time to get everybody up to speed as to how things work, how 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 the process developed, how it, how it, how it has worked in the past. Because none of these people have worked a a body partnership before. And I use that word partnership carefully because it's not just a contract, it's a partnership. And you know, I've always stressed strongly that, you know, we we have a common goal here and it's not an adversarial, you know, company versus company. Situation that we're dealing with. And we got to remember that, especially as we're looking to do more partnerships. In the future. So our compliance office has been working that, those other issues. I think they've come, they've come a long way. They've got a lot more to go. I was glad to see that ninety number. The way, the way I explained it to my folks when I was talking to them this morning, I said, look, if if there's a home that we say. That you all say we should be covering and we say they can order service, the determining factor needs to be, can they go on our website? And see that service is available and and place an order. That to me is the ultimate, the ultimate decider. If they can get on there and place the order, then service is available. And if they can't place the order, then services isn't a bit, isn't available. So I think that's a responsibility. That that I have. So. I know that that we talked to the words like disagreement and point of contention. I think we're still. The folks are are getting a better understanding of the pro of the program and how things are supposed to work. And I'm I'm. Pretty confident that they're going to be able to come up with a solution that makes all of this, all of this work. And I I say that just quite honestly is what what I think. Mike and I spent a lot of time recreating the timeline of email exchanges about the passings and everything. I've shared those with everybody, but you know, as as you all noted, it's it's been a very fairly complicated process. Just quickly on installs, I thought there'd be some interesting, interesting info to share with you. We're getting seventy seven, seventy eight percent of our installs completed within four days. The company metric seventy five percent. So. We're doing much better there. On the repair side, we're we're getting ninety three percent done within forty eight hours. We have metrics at the State Corporation Commission. Of course, those are on the voice side, but. I think the last two months, we've met all for all for the metrics, which is just a a really good thing to to see. In February, we were running about, in in Albemarle, we were running about three hundred drops that we're waiting to get done. We're now at fifty eight as of yesterday. So a lot better. We're still working with the drop crews to get that number down even further. But a tremendous, tremendous in uh increase in the capacity to get things done. I think on restorations, I think Gordonsville Road is the one place we we're still doing a lot of work there. And then the last piece, and I think I've always mentioned this before, but we have a fairly complex audit system that we use to look at the final as built. Before we will pay the contractors out. So the folks, the contract teams that have been out doing the work don't get paid until. Until we've gone out and audited everything. They've fixed everything that that we need. And then we share those final audits. With with you all. And. You know, I don't have the number right in front of me, but you know, we've got a number of them done. We've still got a few more to go. The the operations team noted that on the last audit, it showed great improvement on the quality of the work. In other words, less things that needed to go back and be corrected. Which is a good thing, and we're hoping we see that in in the rest of these. And the bottom, the bottom line of all of. And the bottom, the bottom line of all of that is, you know, we don't get paid from, we don't get paid from you all in the state. Until everything's done and we get things finished. So, you know, everybody realizes that they've got the incentive to get things. Fixed finalized and agreed to so that ultimately the company can come back and ask for reimbursement for the expenses. Sorry, that's a lot of words, but I thought I just, that's kind of my thoughts.
Rich, thanks so much for the updates. Very helpful.
On the topic of ninety three percent of repairs being done with forty eight hours, so I do want to call up that a contractor doing remediation on my road. Two weeks ago, maybe, just severed my line. My, just line to my home. And I had the usual like terrible experience calling Century, like in trying to get somebody to understand that like I'm holding the line in my hand. I don't need to reboot my router. Once I got past that part. I don't know, eleven thirty in the morning on a Wednesday. By four PM the next day, an apologetic for being so late. Brightspeed employee came out to make the repair. The repair didn't work. Not his fault. It looked like it had at the time, but it turned out the slice didn't take. He was back first thing in the morning. And I was back online by ten AM maybe on Friday. Within forty eight hours. And I'll say like the crew that came out. I think there were four people who were there ultimately, like great people, hard workers, friendly. I, I don't begrudge them the thing done wrong with the, the slice. I, I don't have any complaints there. They, they were doing their best. So that was within forty eight hours and I was satisfied to be, have everything working again by that. So. There's an endorsement of the.
Well, a good, a good ending to the story anyway. I hate to hear the beginning of it, but I'm glad to hear it was a good ending. Thank you.
Anything else for Rich?
Just, thank you. Best wishes, Rich.
As much as I can say, I've actually enjoyed working with you all.
All right. Body twenty twenty two.
Sure thing. Yeah, this is a very active project. There's a lot of work throughout the county. You know, either the make ready work that's happening on the telephone poles or. Field, field views of going out and just doing assessments of where work has to happen. One of the things we wanted to announce this evening is one of the. Rise project areas, actually Appalachian Power. It's still within the, the body twenty two. We have our first connection in Albemarle and that's in the Red Hill. So there's certainly to be more coming in that Appalachian Power Red Hill section of the county. So we're very thankful for the work that Firefly is doing to get people connected.
So the first box has been checked. Five thousand more and we'll be.
Well, you know, everybody, there's a lot of maps. Everybody looks at a lot of maps. And as you see this map grow, it's very, it's very important for the broadband authority and the community to understand. That our relationship with Firefly built on a co-op, electric co-op. Is going to be our prevalent fiber provider throughout the county. It's very clear that that's happening. You'll see some future maps where everything that you see in blue, those are areas that are nearly a hundred percent connected. There, there's still, still some connections going on within Whitehall and, and some in Red Hill that are still happening. But in, in general, most of that blue section is already fiber fed and will be adding customers or, or the co-op members. You know, as time progresses, not everybody signs up for fiber. That's another thing that Jason and I are working on. We see this as. The future of our adoption efforts will be making it not only affordable. But having people understand how much value it adds to their, to their life. So we're, we're definitely working to where. It's not just to have the fiber available to people. We need to make sure people are signing up for service and it's affordable and reliable. So that's, that's our goal to keep working with that. You know, we still have a lot of work to go, especially in the rise areas, those purple areas. There's been some progress. It seems like every month Firefly will produce a new schedule. Meaning they'll, they'll actually add a, a name of a particular rise area. And make some of those purple polygons a little more, you know, recognizable. So when someone comes in, I just. Jason and I don't respond with, well, you're part of the rise project. We want to say you're part of the rise Saint John Road project or you're part of the rise. Whatever we want to call that, that southern part of the section. We just need to get some names out there. It just makes our, our jobs a little. And it also like shows a light at the end of the tunnel. Right now, it's like we got all these purple polygons. What we really want to see is some schedules that, that, that people can rely on. We know it's going to happen. We just want to see some, some more schedules that, that guarantee it's going to happen. Next slide, I think. That's the only twenty two update.
Dominion is working, putting in their middle mile fiber. We just don't know how far along they are. And we won't know for a while what their, what their schedule is.
I think Dennis is on, if Dennis is willing or Gary, either one. I think we do know how far, we do have some scheduling with the Dominion part of the work through TJ PDC. They, they, they do a quarterly update and during that quarterly update. Representatives from all four power companies are online and they talk about how far along they've come with their, their planning. As far as where they're going. We've actually got some data about how many, how many miles of middle mile programming. Meaning they haven't put the middle mile in, but we know that Dominion has been working on the engineering and doing the design work. To, to add their middle mile fiber to their existing poles. And every once in a while, we run into some situation where they're, they're building middle miles and there's some concerns about the. The value of that middle mile going up on existing infrastructure. Some people see this as an opportunity and frankly, it can be an opportunity. To, to have electricity there. If you're, rather than putting electricity on a pole or fiber on an existing pole, can you consider bearing? The electricity during, yes. So that's, you know, TJ PDC is doing a great job managing the project. There's a lot of work going on. And we're very appreciative how far they've come so far.
Yeah, from the, and this is going off memory, but from the last quarterly report, I believe. They are nearly complete at the network design phase. And they had. Less, you know, in the double digits of miles of. Fiber actually deployed. But that out of two hundred plus miles in the county that will be deployed as part of this project. Dennis, do you have specific numbers on that?
So I'm hearing echo, but the Dominion is about to finish all the scoping work. And then a lot of it's gone into design. There are areas they've started in the county where, where they can, where they've got, where it's cleared. For them to start where they have the easements and all the permits to do that. So. Depending on where they start at, that also dictates where we'll be able to connect first. And so it's hard for us to give timelines until we know where, where they're going to be. Where they're starting the actual construction of their middle mile. So we're, we'll have more updates here soon, but we're, we're making progress with Dominion. And of course, all the other utilities we're working with.
It, it's good to hear the super tanker is moving.
Yep, I was just, just coming back up from Nelson today and driving up twenty nine. And they were doing one of the last crossings across. About twenty nine there in Cunneville area. Coming up through the Appalachian Red Hill area today.
I didn't want to acknowledge that I appreciate that for, you know, Firefly's purposes, just another connection in Red Hill. It's just another point on their big map of what they're doing in Albemarle. But I'm excited that we have our very first. Yeah, very first, like the very first connection made under this body twenty two, twenty two work, like that was fast, like I'm enthusiastic about that. Also on Whitehall, my parents are very excited. They're getting hooked up this week in the Whitehall district. To their, of course, not funded by us, you know, CEVEX doing that of their own volition, but they're just getting signed up for their connection there. They're very enthusiastic and my mother asked me a question today that I've been asked by several people. So I'll take this chance to, to ask you now, Dennis. What, the, the question is about telephony. We all talked about this a couple of years ago with weight. But if you switch to a VoIP, then you need to have a battery backup to support your phone and how does that work? And then there are other folks in the Whitehall area saying, no, there's no point in doing that. Because if the power goes out, then there's no power for the fiber infrastructures. You're not going to have a, be able to make any phone calls anyway. The question I have is, does CEVEX provide adequate battery backup for the infrastructure? That in the case of the loss of, of power, that there is cause to believe that your phone will still work. Because certainly as a kid growing up in the Free Union, Nerleysville area, there were many times where we would go without power for days in the winter. But our phone would work. And so that's hard to shake loose people's fears of that. Anything you can tell us about that, Dennis?
Yeah, with VoIP and the service we offer, we, we actually have. Not only battery backup to deal with short power surges, but we have generators in all of our telecommunications hubs. So as long as the fiber is not damaged and just your power's out, your internet and. VoIP will work if you have an alternate power source. So the, we do provide battery backup that just keeps the. Keeps the VoIP line up for up to twenty four hours of standby time. You know, that's just to, for you to be able to call nine one one. Is the main purpose for that. But if you have a whole home generator, another generator, and you can hook up the. The O N T and the Wi-Fi router, your internet should work. We've had people do that during. Power outages where they were without power for days. And our internet still works. Like I said, as long as the fiber's not damaged. And typically, we, we see a lot, we don't see that much damage. Sometimes. We've seen trees land on poles, I mean, knock down the, the fiber line, the fiber lines on the ground and it's still working. So. You know, it's, the network's pretty reliable. And I really don't see that as an issue, especially if they have another way to power. If someone wants to. Power their Wi-Fi modem to get the internet to work at the same time. You can use a smaller UPS. That's only going to keep you up for a little while. I have one that keeps us up for about two hours here at my house. So. But I mean, and we also have a backup generator, so I can, or a generator portable when I hook up to get my internet back up. So. As long as you've got a way of power, it should work.
Dennis, is my correct takeaway there that your infrastructure is optimized to maintain power to your equipment? To your, your infrastructure outside of people's homes for, for twenty four hours? That's your goal uptime of the power?
For, for ours, with the backup generators, we can run for days. So that's not the, the battery backup that we offer. That, that all VoIP providers are required to offer for sale or. We will support, will keep your phone line up inside. The phone port open inside the home for up to twenty four hours on standby.
I see. I had no idea that was something that you offered. Now I understand. Thank you for that clarification, Dennis. I appreciate it. Okay.
So that's an add-on feature we offer. We call it battery backup. You know, some companies sell it, some people, and we, we have a monthly lease rate for that. But if something goes wrong with the battery, whatever, we'll come out and replace it. But that is an option. But I mean, if people want to have their own UPS unit. That they want to use or they have their own generator, they don't want to pay for that service, they have the other option of, as long as they can power the O N T. The small little modem, the optical, the. Optical transceiver. Their phone should work. Their internet will not with that particular unit of ours, but if they, if they plug up both their. Their O N T and the Wi-Fi router into the generator. They, their internet and phone should work.
Thank you for that, Dennis.
Any other questions for Dennis? Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, and we on to twenty twenty three.
So I'll start with this, just an explanation of the map itself. The orange areas are. Body twenty two. And then the yellowish in the middle, those are what we've referred to as either Swiss cheese or. Donut holes that were submitted as part of a larger application for body twenty three. That was with five other counties with Firefly as our partner. That application was submitted with the broadband office as the partner. Working with TJ PDC, D A C D, because of the proliferation, there was over three hundred million dollars in requests. For forty nine million dollars worth of funding. We were right below the line, so we were not offered funds during the twenty three round. Everyone, I think it's, it's the last time I'll have to say that, I hope. Well. We, we, we were shut out finally. But we definitely are very hopeful that we're going to be able to fund these areas. And, and one of many ways, and the first, the first way came to us unsolicited. Recently, Firefly has sent us a proposal. That ensures those areas can be connected if we so choose to work with their proposal. And right now, county staff are working with that proposal. And we think by. Middle of August, maybe sooner, we would like to meet with the broadband authority in a separate meeting. To go over a strategy and further explain what is in that proposal and what the role of the broadband authority will play. So we really feel that there's some real good benefit on this and I'll, I'll let Jason talk about the benefit of. Working through the proposal and also a little bit more detail about what, what is in the proposal itself.
Yeah, and. Again, a lot of this comes from our ability to analyze locations leveraging the FCC's fabric. And broadband availability data. What, what this represents is. The possibility that we are going to be millimeters away from universal access based on our analysis. If this project moves forward, then we will be less than a hundred and seventy addresses. Away from having universal access in the county. And that's the size, a size of a problem that we can probably bite off one piece at a time. So I think that for a county as large as we are, with population so spread out. This really represents an incredible opportunity to, to hit universal access. The proposal, total project size is eight point one million. Compared to the body twenty three project, this is actually a little bit less. And which the body twenty three proposal, our portion was going to be a total project cost of eight point eight million. The request is two point four six million dollars. We were originally looking to contribute a match towards body twenty three of six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Currently, the A O has about two million dollars of ARPA funding. That is available to put towards this. We are in, in collaboration with internal stakeholders, working to identify the mechanism. For action as well as the other funding options for the remainder of the two point four six million. There is an eagerness to move quickly. First, the ARPA funding needs to be obligated fairly quickly to avoid any potential clawbacks. This is a very high priority for our greens office. And this is potentially a really, really solid way to do that. Because in addition to needing to obligate the funds by the end of twenty twenty four, they need to be spent by the end of twenty twenty six. By ensuring that all of this work is completed by the end of twenty twenty five. That gives us a long lead time in case there are any delays. The other reason to move quickly, frankly, is that we want to make sure that this is. This opportunity doesn't get lost in the event that there are other funding priorities that could use up available funding.
Would you're thinking timeframe wise, we obviously have an August meeting you're talking about before that. Would be my presumption.
Potentially, depending on a number of, again, we want to see what the mechanism is going to be. In the event that the mechanism is going to require of the authority. Then moving it ahead to ensure that we have enough time to discuss the proposal thoroughly. Give it the space that it needs, then it might be worth having. Uh give it the space that it needs, um then uh it might be worth having an additional meeting specifically to discuss this proposal.
And it may also take board action for funding as an appropriation.
Right, um and there um the finance office has informed us the September sixth meeting. Is going to be largely dominated uh from a finance perspective by the reappropriation. Um so being able to act either at us at, it would be um. Hard for us to be on the schedule for uh September, but potentially being on the schedule for early October. Um is realistic if we can get everything tidied up.
Couple of quick points about this. Um one is two projects that I've worked on closely professionally. Have had a total of twenty one billion dollars clawed back as a result of that bill six weeks ago to deal with the debt ceiling. Obligating money to keep it safe is real. Like, that's a that's a big deal. Uh we know we're gonna use it. We know it's important, but if you don't obligate it, it can vanish, so. Endorsed, I don't want to lose a third thing. Um the second is, I just want to acknowledge like the progress of a few years. But a few years ago, no, two years ago, we didn't know. How many passings are there? How many people are there that do and don't have broadband? It was it was unknowable at that point. So the fact that it is A, knowable, and B, if we can do this, we're a hundred and seventy addresses away from universal service. That's amazing. Like, that's a really big deal. I like twenty nineteen Waldo would have been really encouraged. But acknowledge that twenty thirteen or twenty twenty three Waldo would know this and would be that close to accomplishing this, so like. Uh if we get this done in particular, like, we should all feel real good. That's a it's a big deal. I feel for the hundred and seventy people, but that's like a you can get those people in a room together, like, that's a small number that we can deal with. So like, congratulations. This is awesome.
Um I think that definitely think uh thank you um uh uh. Mister Jake with, uh I think that the 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 recognition does go to the authority um and to Director Cult for. Um seeing the need for this sort of work um well ahead of time, um working to establish the authority and. Uh address this need so early. Um so um. I think it is a big deal too. Uh I think it's also a big deal that this will be ahead of a lot of other um states, uh counties. Um and um that a lot of the the accomplishment does lay here in this room.
Really things that are good for residents in the county are are good things, so that's why we're here.
All right. Thanks, Dennis. Thanks, everybody. Um just just to reiterate, for us, universal coverage has changed. I just want to make sure everyone realizes that. Um a lot of this, a lot of the orange part of this was not included in twenty two because they were considered served and. Considered part of our universal coverage plan, so this not only takes us. To what we originally we said was universal coverage. This will put us to where fiber is the standard. I I think it's more prevalent to say there's only a hundred six seventy six locations and that number could probably be reduced. Um that that'll be fiber served, except for the the small areas of Comcast, which is most of the city. And surrounding area, and that's that that's still a viable fiber alternative. So anyway, I just wanted to put that put that out there so people understand.
The goalposts keep getting moved.
Yeah, it'll be a long time before they move past fiber, right? We're done when everybody has fiber.
Right.
Um could we go back to slides to number eight and nine and? When I and I want to make sure I understand, okay, I see eight slide there, the map. Colors and everything, then go to nine. Mike, could you explain again the orange and the yellow? The on this slide, what they signify.
The the red section is our big project, that's body twenty two.
Okay.
Um the orange, the orange little, the Swiss cheese aspect of this is the what was not. Funded for body twenty three and what is in the proposal.
But what I see on this slide for body twenty.
Apps are always challenging, aren't they?
Yeah, is not, doesn't match up exactly with what the previous map showed.
Yeah, cuz yeah, I think it's twenty, I made the mistake of saying twenty one and I should have said twenty one and twenty two.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and and the other thing to point out here, um on on this map, we're not including any of the C V X areas. Um so the red, um the the red represents uh fiber body projects. Um so that's why body twenty one is included in that and body twenty two. It does not represent um any private uh expansion. So C V X not in there, nor is um. The private uh bright speed footprint.
Okay, thank you. That that helps, because I was trying to.
Yeah, sorry. Some of the difference. More clear on it, uh maybe even a legend.
Possible to have a map of the county that shows in some color. Everything that is projected to be completed or already has surface. And then to show us what we still don't have identified as being.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chair, should we move on to the B A O report?
I believe we should move on to the B A A O report.
Um so last month I shared with you all um some detail that I received from uh the state on bead. Funding and timeline. Since then, we did hear uh the rather good news of one point four eight billion dollars coming to the state. Uh to address the problem. Um the. First portion of that is going to be directed towards uh serving unserved and underserved locations. The state's estimate um is going to be somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred thousand locations. Um traditionally, the state has spent about two uh twenty five hundred dollars per passing. Um in body rounds um to ensure that uh. They're gonna be able to capture even locations that are rather distant. Uh we're expecting them to announce a per passing rate closer to five thousand dollars per passing, um which puts. The size of the problem, addressing all unserved and underserved locations at about five hundred million dollars. Um that leaves nearly a billion dollars on the table for equity affordability and non-deployment purposes. Um and so we are projecting that in. Years two, three, four, and five represented artfully um on the right there. Um that's gonna be funding that.
At least we have a legend.
Uh that's gonna be funny that could be used for digital equity purposes, um which is really exciting to us. Um before that, um and this is starting in the summer of of next year. Um we should be seeing some Digital Equity Act funding come through. Um that's gonna come in two forms. One is another uh state distribute distribution. Um and then there's also gonna be a competitive uh fund that's going to be. Uh available sometime in the 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 application should open sometime in the spring, we're hoping. Um we've been working to prepare our digital equity plan, um and this is kind of how it all ties together. Um we prepare a digital equity plan, um we get it written, um we are hoping. Uh to have a plan before you all uh before October. Um with the hopes that uh it could be before this body and it could be potentially before the board supervisors as well as the leadership of our other partners, including. University, the city, and several community organizations, um a- and with the expectation that um. Those partners would be carrying a lot of the implementation burden. Um we're a small office. Um our goal is not to expand and capture funding. For our office, but actually to find opportunities for our partners to be able to expand their capacity to conduct digital equity work. Um so in the last uh update that we provided, we'd completed our uh focus groups led by students. Um we continue doing focus groups. We had uh several focus groups with our community advisory committees. Um as well as uh just today, a focus group with first responders out of the Monticello Fire Station. Uh these are really, really valuable for getting other perspectives than we had before, um and in particular, um. The first responders were able to give us not just a perspective from uh home internet. Uh but also being in the field um and what the experience is like trying to use internet solutions um while doing a job. Um we've also been participating um in the state's effort. Um our uh digital equity plan will be included in the state's digital equity plan. Um they have a current deadline in September um for release before uh it has to be in public comment for thirty days. Um we believe that they are going to ask for an extension. Um they can by let's by the statute. Ask for a six-month extension. We believe they're gonna ask for something shorter. Um so that way they can finish compiling their research and uh produce a high-quality report. Um as part of that, um we would like to introduce you all to Augusta Rochelle. Uh I guess is working as intern with us for uh the next several weeks. Um and one of the goals is to produce two white papers um that are going to be uh. Included in the digital equity plan. The first is a white paper on our A C P Bridge program. Um the state is really interested in how it was developed and uh exploring ways to implement that. Uh either as a a model for localities to create the same program or as a statewide program. Um and then we're also going to work to put together a white paper on the coalition that we've built um and the model for um. Serving as a capacity building function. Um. So thank you to Augusta for joining our team. Um and then the last thing that I wanted to discuss um. I got there um our pilot projects. Um we obviously have a very large gap between October. Um when the plan should be completed and then when funding is actually going to come in, so we're working with our community partners. Um and uh soliciting private funders to look for opportunities for funding. To go towards our community partners to set up small pilot projects. Um we will help conceive of. And uh guide those projects, but really the hope is that those partners are really going to take up uh these efforts. Um to prove out the model for themselves and also um in preparation for applications that might be due in. Uh the spring, uh summer, fall timeline of twenty twenty four. Um. We are also hoping to target announcements of those uh pilot projects um for early October. If you guys hear me talking about early October a lot. Um October second through the eighth is also Digital Inclusion Week. Um we hope that uh the county will have a large. Uh participation in digital inclusion week activities. And that's all I got.
Yeah, I'm I'm.
Yeah, exciting. Any questions?
Yeah, it's a good one.
I'm uh. Excited about, you know, the opportunities that the bead funding might offer for those hundred and seventy folks we were talking about, you know, things like that, so. Which I'm sure a hundred thousand other people in Virginia are equally excited about how it may help them. Uh but it's nice to be, you know, to to feel like that could be enough to push you over the. Push you over the goal line.
Yeah.
So uh organization meeting.
Yes, Chair, I added this to the agenda. Just want to. Remind everyone that we have to, the broadband authority has to meet um and um. Do what's called an annual organization meeting as part of our charter. And during that meeting, we established the schedule of regular meetings, so we can either keep the fourth Wednesday or decide to. Move to another monthly or we could go bi-monthly. However, the broadband authority wants to move forward. Um there's also the opportunity and the requirement to either elect or reelect our officers. So the treasurer, secretary, chair, and vice chair need to be either reelected or elected. And we also have the opportunity to work with Richie, which everyone enjoys, um to amend our rules of procedure.
Mike was saying that in an honest, not facetious.
How can I make these rules less easy to break? Um so yes. Okay, just just preparing people. We don't make the decisions now. I just, if you have a loss about any of those.
Suggestions, I think we 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 over the past few years, we have made significant efforts to change our rules of procedure. I'm just not aware of any. Burning desire to make any amendments at this point.
And and we can, of course, amend them at another time.
Right, and if you have suggestions to do that. Yeah, I mean, we can do it. Otherwise, I think we'll be in a position of just readon it.
Yes, Trevor. Ten update, um uh county executive has has reorganized a little bit. Some of our portfolios or responsibility adjusted. Uh we're in the middle of recruiting a deputy county executive. And and my work, my direct work with the broadband office changed effective one July. So I'm currently now working with public safety and economic development. So it's not, we we are no longer in a grip boarding relationship. Mike, Mike is working in under uh health and human services. You know, alongside with our equity office and and our housing office and social services, so it's kind of bundling. The broadband office in that that outreach work that we're doing on the program. I think makes sense. We're still working through all that. I raised it to say. Um we'll have to make a decision within the exec's office about which. To the the continuation of of who will support broadband. Um I you know, I'm advocating for me just staying the course since we are where we are and in the work that started years ago and we're. On a, I think, on a line path down, you know, to to universal achieving. And all the work of broadband office is now going, but I need to just reconcile that with uh. With uh our county executive and so.
Expectations of the same, yeah. Well, thanks for the update on that. Oh, with with regard to the uh calendar. I I don't want to establish a schedule of regular meetings right now. We'll do that next time, but um. I believe we've had good success in the past with condensing our November and December meetings. Into just one meeting, the early part of December. Uh as opposed to trying to schedule one at Thanksgiving and at Christmas, it seems to have failed abyssally in the math. Uh or when it did succeed, it was worse than failing, so um. Uh so I invite you all to look at your calendars for the early part of December to see, you know, if there might be a day in there we can agree on to put on our calendar. Uh for that one meeting then. Al- also, uh my. You know, initial reaction is maybe we don't need to have so many meetings, but I am assured it is much easier to cancel a meeting than it is to schedule a meeting. So perhaps we should calendar the same number of meetings this this go around. Uh with the idea that if there is not business for the authority to conduct, you know, who gives due notice and gets a meeting. So I I just plant those thoughts. If there are other thoughts, I'm I'm delighted to hear them. And of course, you know, being an officer really looks good on your permanent record.
Let me know now, this thing being uh participated by Zoom.
We'll look for you in that venue and vote on you accordingly.
As as the rules require.
No.
Uh and if you don't attend, there's a chance you could get elected to. Is there any other uh business that should come before the authority, the other matters? Hearing none. Going, going, go, all right. Uh well, then let's uh. I'll I'll move to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all very much.
So I guess, where are you from?
I'm from Charles.
And so what um like.